Okay. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 8th, 2015, and was posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 8th, 2015, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. When you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones. Assistive listening devices are available. All right. Jenny, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. May I roll call, please?
Mayor Beryl Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
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 Okay. I'm happy to see so many representatives from our Main Street group here tonight. So if you wouldn't mind coming up and giving us a Main Street minute.
Hello. Probably don't need this. Things are chugging along at Main Street. We're working our tails off on Arts in the Park, which is going to be on Sunday, September 20th. Everyone should come. I hope you all know about it. I've been trying to get the word out. We have, as of now, we have more vendors than last year. And last year, we had more vendors than ever before. So hopefully, it'll be even bigger than last year. So it's going pretty well. There's still a few days left for vendors to sign up if anyone wants to get a booth. Other than that, I think we forwarded you our, a week or two ago, we forwarded around our audit report for last year, which was clean. There was nothing wrong. So things look good. Our financial situation looks good. We'll be talking about our budget, I guess separately, like as a separate agenda item. After Arts in the Park, you know, we still have the farmer's market every Friday through December. We have board partnering with Century 21 and a townwide garage sale on October 10th and 11th. The Halloween event, Small Business Saturday, tree lighting, Hanukkah event, holiday party. So we're just chugging along with a lot of stuff going on this fall. Let's see, what else? There is a new business coming in finally on where the old Schwarmah place was next to, if you're facing Stop &amp; Shop, it's immediately to the right of Stop &amp; Shop. It's going to be a hamburger, a high-end hamburger place. And they hope to have their soft opening at Arts in the Park. So that will be great. Yep. So that's exciting. That's pretty much it for now. Anything else? Oh, of course, Kinetics. Kinetics had their grand opening party last week. And they're also going to have another grand opening party at Arts in the Park. They have expanded. They have more than doubled their size. We're so excited that Mietra is doing so well. She's a really great business to have downtown. She's planning all sorts of things for, to engage the community. She's going to have tables on the sidewalk and, you know, all kinds of street parties. She's going to partner with Pinos and do more block parties. She's really, she's doing well. So we're really excited for her. I think that's it.
Okay. And do you know when your street fair is going to be next year?
Yes. The first Sunday of May. It might be May 1st. The 5K also.
Okay.
We got a lot of feedback from runners who really like it to be the first Sunday. Yeah, that's May 1st.
Okay.
The runners really prefer it. I guess the middle May weekend, conflicted with too many other popular runs. So people were, I mean, we had more runners last year than ever before. So I think, you know, I think the date works well. So we're going to try to keep it the first Sunday.
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you.
All right, sure.
All right. Tonight, I will be signing a proclamation to make people more aware of fibrodisplasia ossifigens progressive disease. I'd like to first read you a little bit about it and then read the proclamation. This information was forwarded to me by Senator Joe Vitale, who is the Senate Health, Human Services, and Senior Citizens Committee Chair. He's asking for help in bringing awareness to a condition called fibrodisplasia ossifigens progressiva, of which a resident of New Jersey is stricken. FOP is how it's known, is a rare genetic disease in which soft tissue transforms into hard bone, resulting in restricted movement and ultimately immobility. This condition affects one in every 2 million people, and researchers estimate there are 3,000 people living with FOP worldwide. Currently, there is no treatment or cure. And so, in support of the families in New Jersey who have members suffering with this, we are issuing a proclamation. Whereas fibrodisplasia ossifigens progressive is a rare genetic incurable condition in which the body makes additional bone where bone should not form, such as within muscle tendons, ligaments, and other connective tissues, with symptoms of FOP including excruciating pain and distortion of the existing skeletal frame. And whereas identified after 15 years of hard research by the University of Pennsylvania, the only known research facility currently investigating a cure for this. And whereas discoveries made in FOP lab by scientists and researchers may aid in the treatment or cure for other genetic diseases, such as osteoporosis, arthritis, and spinal cord injuries. And whereas the symptoms of FOP usually begin in the first or second decade of life, with the majority of patients diagnosed by age 10, depriving children of normal development, with FOP affecting approximately 2,500 people worldwide. And whereas since learning that the daughter of a close friend has been diagnosed with FOP, Gary White of Mountainside, New Jersey, with the help and support of his wife and three sons, has made it his mission to raise awareness of this debilitating disease by asking the mayors of all 566 New Jersey municipalities and all 21 New Jersey counties pass either a proclamation or a resolution urging FOP awareness to be placed in an FOP awareness campaign book to hopefully one day display in Washington, DC. On behalf and in support of the children, young adults in the state of New Jersey afflicted with FOP and equally show concern for all other children afflicted with FOP, now therefore be it resolved that the Borough of Highland Park County of Middlesex does hereby proclaim to acknowledge and help raise awareness of fibrodisplasia ossifigens progressive and commends Gary W. White and his wife and three sons for their dedication in making others aware of this affliction and for their work and support. For the benefit of FOP and further urges all 25 Middlesex County municipalities to adopt a resolution or proclamation to assist with FOP awareness and forward same to Gary W. White to conclude, to include in his FOP awareness campaign book. In witness thereof, I will be signing this today. Okay. Do I have any council reports? Let's start down this end.
If I may, there, just with regard to Redevelopment Agency, their work is going very, very well. And I'd encourage everyone to come out to the redevelopment meeting this Thursday night here at 7:30. There's at least one redevelopment proposal that's been under discussion for a while that they'll be reviewing. And it looks like their work is really starting to come to fruition after the years of restudy and concentration on the current needs for redevelopment in town. And I hope to see a lot of people there on Thursday night.
Okay. Thank you. That's good news. Councilman Fine?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention two items that the Human Relations Commission has been working on. The first is that at our last Human Relations Commission meeting in August, the Commission voted to establish a task force called the Highland Park 9/11 National Day of Discussion Task Force, which will be chaired by Greg Trevor and Allison Salerno. And a little bit later during public comment time, Greg Trevor is here with us this evening to discuss a little bit more about the task force. And the second item that the Commission's been working on is an event that will take place on October 14th at the Senior Youth Recreation Center involving a forum that, again, the Commission will sponsor, that will be a forum with the Highland Park Police Department at which residents from Highland Park will be able to ask questions to our police officers for the purpose of being able to enhance communication between the residents and police. So those are two items that the Human Relations Commission have been working on, and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. Councilman Potts?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give a brief positive summary of the summer camp program this summer that we just finished up this year. We had actually almost an 18% increase in our number of participants. So that's a very good sign that we're doing a good job. And we're, of course, always looking to make the best better. But we've done a great job of that, and it's evident by the great turnout that we had of this year over previous years. Still haven't gotten the actual financial data yet. That takes a little while to get all the bills paid and everything cleared up. But generally, the camp's obviously a positive situation and a positive cash flow for our Recreation Trust Fund. Also want to mention that fall sports registrations are, of course, are starting now. I have found out that we are in need of some youth soccer coaches. We do provide free coach counseling. And so if you're not great with soccer, like I wouldn't be as far as coaching a sport like that, we do provide coaching, coaches, training. And so if you're interested in doing that, please contact Andrea Bay, who's our Recreation Coordinator. Again, it's already been brought up as far as from the arts point of view. Arts in the Park, again, just as a reminder, is Sunday, September 20th, and that goes from 11:30 to 4:30 in the afternoon on the avenue. Thanks.
Thank you. Council President Welkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Phase one of our Valentine Street reconstruction project is complete. It's a pleasure to drive that part of the roadway. And it's even been repainted in some areas that hadn't been painted in the past or now have the marks on it. It's really, it's really good. And they also report that we've had a really good working experience with Jads Construction. So that worked out really well. And phase two is forthcoming. That will be the rest of Valentine Street up until Fifth Ave. So that is coming. I'd like to thank Public Works also for repainting some of the side streets near our schools in time for back to school. And also a couple of things with regard to the schedule. Monday is Labor Day, so borough offices are closed. And please note the holiday schedule for garbage pickup. Additionally, thank you, Rebecca, for mentioning the garage sale. I don't know when we'll have our next Borough Council meeting here. But just again, as a reminder, that it's Saturday and Sunday, October 10th and 11th from 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. To coincide with that, we will have our regular bulk pickup schedule for the weeks before that. And following the garage sale, we'll have an additional bulk pickup. So look for that, and we'll announce that as we get closer to the date as well. And a big congratulations to our middle school and high schools. They've each, the green teams for sustainable jersey for schools, they've each won $2,000 to install water filling stations so that kids can take reusable bottles like this one to school and refill it at school. And it's good for the environment, reduces waste, and we're very proud of them. Thanks to Sarah LeBeau and Haley Conrad and Irene Marx is one of the parents that is involved in it as well. So thanks to everybody that helped out with that.
Okay. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Just real quick, Mayor. I wanted to remind everyone that summer hours end after this week. Borough offices are closed Monday, Labor Day, and they will return to normal hours from eight. We will open at 8:00 in the morning and close at 4:00 in the evening, starting Tuesday, September 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have anything?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I just have two really good things to talk about tonight. The first is I got official word from the State of New Jersey's Department of Transportation that we may go ahead and paint the wall with the graphic motif that was a joint effort of the Main Street Design Team. So thank you both, all, three of you, very much. And please give my special thanks to your design group. And they worked with the architect from the developer that will be building the homes on the former Y site to come up with this design. And as soon as, I know that the developer has already contracted the painter. And as soon as we get the papers here and everything is signed, we're going to put paint brush to wall. And that dilapidated, crumbling, ugly wall that has greeted so many people on their entry into Highland Park for the last 20 years or so will now have a beautiful Highland Park motif on it. So thank you to everyone who was involved in making that happen. It's only been, about 15 years we've been asking the DOT for permission. The second thing is, I hope you'll all join me in wishing our Borough Clerk a very happy birthday. Thank to you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's all on TV.
For your viewing pleasure.
Okay. I have some time now for some public discussion. Would anybody like to step up to the mic? Please, please identify yourself and where you live.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Borough Administrators, members of the council. My name is Greg Trevor. I live at 66 Grant Avenue. And by the way, when I looked at the calendar today, I realized that today is the 20th anniversary of when we moved to Highland Park. So thankfully, there's no song, there's no song to celebrate. We'll just keep moving on. I just wanted to take a moment to build on what Councilman Fine talked about and to thank the mayor and members of the Borough Council for being so supportive of an idea that my wife and I brought to many of you in recent weeks. As we all know, 10 days from now marks the 14th anniversary of one of the worst, most tragic days in the history of our nation. As many of you know, I am a survivor of that day. I'm a survivor of the September 11th attacks on the World Trade Center. As a survivor, I and others are becoming increasingly troubled by the declining level of interest and participation in 9/11 events, as well as growing complacency about many of the lessons of the heroism and sacrifice of that day. Last year, I wrote a column about this issue and suggested that we, as a nation, find a new way to remember the sacrifice and heroism of that day. In a nutshell, the proposal was that we make September 11th an annual day of discussion, where individuals and groups make special efforts to reach out to people of all kinds and all backgrounds in search of greater understanding so that we can overcome the differences that can sometimes divide us. After conversations with several of you, I guess first, Councilman Potts, and then is Mayor Beryl Mittler, and Council President Welkowitz, Councilmember Fine, Councilmember Foster Dublin, who's not here tonight. I am proud to say that thanks that the Human Relations Commission has endorsed an initiative to mark this effort and, as Councilman Fine indicated, formed a task force to begin planning for the 15th anniversary, approximately one year from now, the first annual day of discussion with, here at Highland Park. I also wanted to just make a small announcement that as part of that, we want to create an effort through the HRC to encourage members of the community to come to us with ideas on how we can implement such a day of discussion. One of the great things about a town like Highland Park is that we have such great diversity, and we have people who are so interested in working with one another. We've already begun to get new ideas, get ideas, excuse me, for such a day. Discussion of mental health issues, discussion of the unsung heroes in our communities, discussion of support for people in uniform of all kinds and the work that, and public officials and the work that they do on behalf of our community. Those are all excellent ideas, and frankly, we hope we can get to all of them in the coming years. My wife, who could not be here tonight, unfortunately, but sends her regards. We both feel very strongly that thanks to the support of the council and the mayor and other people in the community, that Highland Park can once again be a catalyst for positive change that can extend well beyond the boundaries of our community. And again, thank you all very much for all of your support and encouragement, and I look forward to working with each of you on this.
Thank you. And thank you, Greg, for coming up with this initiative. Okay. Any other public discussion? Okay. Seeing none?
Herb Gross, Adelaide Gardens. Madam Mayor, what is the situation on First Avenue? I have not seen any progress whatsoever.
Okay. So thank you for bringing that up to our attention a few weeks ago. Scott Luthman tried to reach out to you, but he did get to First Avenue. And a citation was issued to one property owner who's already been into the office at code enforcement to fix his sidewalks. So that is being done. Kathy, Borough Administrator, I don't know if you know when that person came in, but it had to be one of the days I was out last week.
Yeah, I don't know the exact date, no.
Yeah. So it had to be either Wednesday or Thursday of last week.
Are you saying, Madam Mayor, are you saying that this citation that you're talking about will go into effect as of the day you said? And when will, when will any progress begin?
Okay. So the gentleman who owns the property has already come in to get the paperwork started to fix his sidewalks. What I would suggest, Mr. Gross, if you have a chance, reach out to Mr. Luthman in the code enforcement office. I know he tried to get ahold of you, and he'll be able to fill you in on the details of when they're expecting the job to begin.
All right.
Thank you. Any other public discussion? Okay. Clerk, would you report on advertising and notifying of Main Street Highland Park 2015 budget for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
The 2015 Main Street Highland Park budget was introduced and approved on first reading on July 7th, 2015. A summary was advertised in the Home News Tribune on Saturday, July 11th, with the public hearing scheduled for today, September 1st. Copies of the budget were made available to the public in Borough Hall and the Highland Park Public Library.
Okay. May I have a motion to take up the Main Street Highland Park budget on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Public discussion? Okay. Seeing none. May I have a resolution to adopt the Main Street Highland Park 2015 budget on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Let me just comment as liaison to Main Street. The budget is healthy. The budget is intact. It reflects the excellent work that's been going on. More so than Rebecca, the executive director, and Jen, the chair of the board, when I go to the meetings, I'm delighted to see the engagement and the vitality of the projects and the lively discussion. But more so than that, the scope of Main Street is now even looking at, find ways to branch out, to have events occur all through the entire district that Main Street is in charge of. And I'm pleased to see that work as well. And I'm very proud to say I am the liaison to Main Street. I vote yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe it's one of the tablets that maybe the sounds aren't turned off. We have new tablets, so please.
I guess that approved it, too. Okay. Thank you all. Clerk, would you report on advertising of traffic ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 7, traffic was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any public hearing? Okay. Resolution to, may I have a motion on a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, would you report on the introduction of bond ordinance amendment, property acquisition for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
This is a long one. Bond Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Bond Ordinance Number 1881, finally adopted by the Borough Council on February 17th, 2015. That was entitled Bond Ordinance Providing for the Acquisition of a 4.17-acre tract of land designated as Block 47, Lot 27 to 75 on the official Highland Park tax map in the Borough of Highland Park, procreating $1,860,000 and authorizing the issue of $1,767,000 in bonds or notes. To finance the cost, the description is revised. For the tract of land authorized to be purchased therein and to amend and supplement other provisions, was duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. We're moving on to the consent agenda. Hope I will not lose my voice. May I have a motion to adopt the following items? 915-249, resolution to approve social media policy for boards and commissions. 915-250, resolution to amend annual salary resolution. 915-251, resolution to authorize purchase of property. 915-252, resolution to cancel sidewalk assessment. 915-253, resolution to authorize and execute inter-local agreement with MCIA for yard waste. 254, resolution to approve 2015-2016 ABC license, club license. 255, resolution to approve 215-216 ABC licenses, plenary, retail, distribution, and consumption. 256, resolution to approve inactive ABC license, Kiaden Incorporated. 257, resolution to approve bills list. 258, resolution to approve pay estimate number two, improvement to Valentine Street, Phase One Jads Construction Company. 259, resolution to refund overpayment 259, Resolution to Refund Overpayment of Taxes, 1412 Central Avenue. 260, Resolution to Authorize Execution of NJDEP Treatment Works Application. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
I am appointing the following, Candace Feinberg to the Board of Health. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, is there any public discussion? Mrs. Bickard?
Ms. Bickard, 307 Magnolia. First, tell me what this sidewalk assessment, cap, 252.
Mayor, would you like me to answer?
Yes, would you?
There was someone that fixed their sidewalk themselves and they were put on our list that we fixed it. We didn't fix their sidewalk, they did, so we have to have a resolution to cancel it.
Okay, how about a resolution to get the people who should have fixed their sidewalks and didn't? Yeah, on my street.
Okay.
I've told Ms. Luthman about it.
Right, we, you know, people may have been cited and may not have fixed their sidewalks. We don't know where things are in the process right now.
Three years now.
Yes, I know.
This bulk pickup. Every other month when people do things in their house, they don't wait to put it outside at the time, but it lies out there. In my neighborhood, there's a toilet that's been lying there for a month. Nobody cares, you know.
Well, we do care and in fact, many of us on council, when we notice these things, do get in touch with our DPW department to take care of it. So when you see these things, because I know you're out and about walking, when you see these things, if you could please just get in touch with the Department of Public Works, they will take care of this.
Now about sidewalk repair. At 2nd and Raritan, where that gas station used to be, on Raritan Avenue, the sidewalk is in horrible condition.
Okay, so Borough Administrator, would you bring that to Mr. Luthman's attention to take a look at?
Yeah, I do believe that was part of the situation Mr. Gross brought up, was also by the Sunoco. They may have been cited, but I will double check.
Yeah.
I didn't hear all of it, somebody?
I will have, I will have Code Enforcement check into it.
Thank you. Is there any other public discussion? Okay, seeing none. We are going to go into executive session. May I have a resolution?
A motion to, what do we need?
Motion to go into executive.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Okay, thank you all.